Some people coming in wirelessly today. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Madera County Arts Authority to order and ask if there are any additions to the agenda. Seeing none, is there a motion to, wait a minute, let me back up a second here. Do we have Mr. Poitras with us today? Okay, so we can note that we have four of our board members here today, so we have a quorum. And right now, we don't have Mrs. Gallegos in attendance. Okay, I see no additions to the agenda. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
A second.
We moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Oh, I didn't hear from Mr. Poitras.
Are you complaining or just stating it back?
No, I had just said that he was in on the meeting.
Okay.
But I didn't hear his voice. Member Poitras, are you available?
I'm trying.
That'll end. Member Poitras, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I hear a little bit of an echo as well, but we can hear you.
Okay, is this the best we're going to be able to do? Clear.
Why don't we just, the words that see the motion? And since Supervisor Poitras wasn't able to hear.
Can all of you on the webinars hear me? Okay, I'm gonna close the meeting and then restart it. Can you all rejoin in just a few minutes? Thank you.
Yes.
Sure. They're gonna restart them.
Sorry about that.
We understand. I understand. If it can be long, it will.
Okay, Rob here.
Okay. Bye. Bye. Okay, we're ready. Okay. Okay, so am I starting from where we left off? Okay, we're moving to item two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. You please stand. Ready? Alute.
Aye.
Item three. Well, thank you, everybody, for having patience. Our technical issues are sometimes challenging, but thank you, ladies, for figuring that out. Okay, item number three is public comment. Members of the public may address the board on any item, any matter under the jurisdiction of the board, but not appearing on the agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, the public session. Today, we have a report and update presentation from QK. So welcome. We have people online and here in person.
Yes, thank you for having us.
There you are. Okay.
All right.
It's okay, I'll just do a little introduction and then Jessica will be...
Absolutely.
...taking us through the little workshop period about our expanded room. Just very briefly, to not spend too much time, you can, I know you've all had a chance to read the report. First of all, thank you for having us today. It's been a good process. We've, not only has it been productive, but I think we're also enjoying it. At least we are. It's an interesting topic and it's an area we know pretty, this part of the state, we know pretty well. And so we're really pleased to continue to work on this. The engagement period has been really productive. We've had so many good discussions with individuals. And we possibly may have some more that we, as we develop some areas that may need a little bit more input. But we're really focusing now, pivoting to trying to develop the flesh of the report and come up with the real substance we were hired. So if you have any questions about the specific tasks, we do have our response there in the report that was given to you. But we'd like to move, if we could, to the item that we also included in your report, where we provided a sort of an exploded or an expanded outline, which is, really shows the entire structure and the items we're planning to cover. We've already started, obviously, the research and developments of pieces of that, but that will continue for the next 30 to 45 days as we flesh that out. And so we wanted to run through that, make sure we're touching base on all the items of concern that the community might have and the authority may have. So I'd like to turn that over to Jessica to take that section of the agenda.
Hey, Jessica.
All yours, Jess.
Looks like she's having trouble.
You're still muted.
I think she's trying to figure it out.
We can hear your dog real well, though.
Maybe stop sharing your screen and try again. We can still see your screen in case that helps.
Also on the line had been...
Can you hear me now?
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Oh, my goodness. All right, so you guys had your technical difficulties and now that was mine. I apologize. I went to share my screen and then I couldn't unmute myself. So I was like, what if I'm gonna mime this presentation? Okay, let's try again, shall we?
Very creative.
Like, all right, let's think. All right, so now you should be able to both see my screen and hear me, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you again for having us today. We're glad to be here. We actually, today, we have a couple of additional QKers who are at this meeting who have been helping us with this project. So we are glad to have them here as well. This is our third presentation to you, so we are at the halfway point of this project. This is a six-month-long present, project rather, and this is month three. So with that being said, there are two things that we want to discuss with you today. We want to give you a general update of where we are in the process, what has been done, and what is yet to be done. We also want to review a basic version of our outline of the document so that we can get some feedback from you. We don't want to just hand you the document come six months from now or so. So we want this, because we want this to be a more collaborative process. We want to make sure that this is the document that you want. So moving on. Quick look at our project tasks for this report, and it's both community engagement and the feasibility action plan. We are happy to announce that we have finished the main tasks of our community engagement process. We have met with all major stakeholders. There are still a few people that we would love to talk to if the opportunity arises. But at this point, we have hit all the major players that we wanted to talk to. We are also excited because we are in the full swing of our writing process. We have drafted chapters one through four, and they're obviously subject to change depending upon the conversation that we have today, but they have been drafted. That leaves us with chapters five, six, and seven to write yet, which is, in my opinion, the fun part. This is where we talk about the action plan, the steps we can take, and also all of the financing information, which is the John Queering specialty. You know, everybody needs a finance person. He is our finance guy. So going into a little bit more detail on community engagement, like I said, it's been great. We have had about a dozen interviews with upwards of probably 20 people we've spoken to. We have talked to interested parties from Madera County, the City of Madera, the MCAC, the MCAA, the Madera Unified School District, and other interested parties, some of which are from the mountain communities in the county. There were certain themes that we noticed when talking to people, so we made sure to take note of those and include those in the document. The planning and review process has been completed, and you will see that in chapters two and four of the document. So speaking of the document, there are seven chapters to the feasibility action plan. You should have an outline in front of you, which goes into more detail than this one, correct? In your packet, there should be an outline that's two pages long?
Correct.
Yeah.
Awesome. I can also show it here with my screen. I apologize, it doesn't look as pretty as my PowerPoint. Whenever Word exports outlines, they don't let you jazz it up at all. So this is a very, very basic outline. So before we started writing, we asked ourselves three questions. What or who are we writing this for, this document for? What are we trying to say, and how can we say it as clearly as possible? So with regard to who we're writing it for, who our audience is, this is for you, the MCAA, because you represent the major players that will be involved in implementing the goals of this plan. Secondary audience is the general public, mainly those throughout Madera County that will benefit the most from this plan. Now, when trying to figure out what to say in this plan, the first thing we obviously looked at was the scope of work. We wanted to give you an action plan to implement the goals that you have established for your community. The second thing to consider was how do we relay that in a clear, concise way so that everyone understands what they can do next, right? How are we going to start the engine to get this thing moving? And that's where we came up with the structure of the document, which is pretty intuitive. It's just past, present, and future, which you can see in the outline. So now I'd like to go through the seven chapters of the document and give you a little bit more information on it so that we can get some questions, comments, feedback. Chapter one is the executive summary. This pretty much discusses everything I've just mentioned. This is the introduction to the document. It also includes the goals of the document, which are in section 1.4. Chapter two was a review of the previous visioning efforts. The main visioning documents that we reviewed were the DOMA, or the Downtown Madera Plan, and the Vision Madera 2025, which is a part of the City of Madera's general plan. This part, as well, is pretty intuitive. We looked at the strengths and weaknesses of both the plans. We focused a little bit more on the DOMA plan because that one was most recently adopted. The City of Madera has also recently adopted a plan for Yosemite Avenue, but we reviewed that in chapter four. Moving on to chapter three, the assessment of current operation and facilities. This chapter has a brief discussion on the MCAA and the MCAC. Then it reviews the community facilities that were mostly identified through our interviews with stakeholders. We wanted to look at many facilities and discuss their ability to potentially conduct art activities and the needed improvements and enhancements in order to conduct those art activities. We couldn't go into too much detail in this chapter, mostly because we aren't, for example, the building inspector who can determine the true condition of a building. Nor could we, for the sake of this project, give each facility a dollar amount that would be required in order to conduct these art activities. So this is a pretty, it's a broader view. It's an identification of potential sites. And further studies and discussions will need to happen before moving forward with many of these sites, just based on the condition that they're in right now. Chapter four are the regulatory considerations. So as policy planners, this is where, we think this is the meat of the current conditions throughout the county. From a policy perspective is how we wanted to look at this. So we looked at three agencies: the County of Madera, the City of Madera, and the City of Chowchilla. And then we looked for three different types of policies: their general plans, their municipal codes, and any other miscellaneous projects or policies that they might have. We developed a methodology to ensure objectivity when looking at and assessing these policies. We basically created a list of particular keywords that pertain to public arts and events. I believe we came up with 12 or so phrases. We then looked for them throughout all the policies. And then, if we found it, we determined to what extent is that policy explained in enough detail to make the public art or event process go as smoothly as possible, right? So as policy planners, we want to write policies that are clear and easy to understand. So this is how we graded policies, for lack of a better term. This is more clearly shown in the chart, which you will see in the administrative draft. It's a little bit more difficult to express it in words. So that's the extent of what we have drafted so far, but the last three chapters are outlined as well, which you can see here. Chapter five is reimagining downtown Madera. This plan does have a focus on downtown Madera with regard to implementation and action items that will help with downtown revitalization efforts. But much of this discussion is applicable throughout the entire county. So in chapter five, we take a big-picture look at the main ingredients for a downtown revitalization effort. We will discuss community events and partnerships and their importance to create a sense of community. We will discuss downtown urban design efforts, including some larger urban planning theories and trends. So we'll be talking about, you know, the big ones: creative place-making, tactical urbanism, the experience index, retail reinvention, downtown residential growth. I was just reading an academic paper today on the impact of craft breweries for economic development. So there's a lot of information out there, and we're going to look at some of the bigger themes and more recent trends. We will then look at public art and the impact that that can have on creating a sense of place in the downtown area. We will talk about mural districts, sculptures, community art, something where, for example, each person paints a tile. And then putting all of that together, you have a community mosaic of everyone in the community. So then we're going to look at the successes, particular successes for inspiration. Who has had successful downtown revitalization initiatives? What can we learn from them and what can we potentially take from them? So as you can see, we're going to be discussing Prescott, Arizona, St. Louis, Missouri, and Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Chapter six is the financing chapter. This chapter gives a pretty good overview of everything you should know when thinking about financing these community projects. Where can you get your funds? Grants, borrowing, fundraising? What kinds of things will you need for major projects or special projects? What strategies can you utilize to match what you need with your potential funding source? Because you know that financing a project, while it may be one of the most difficult parts of a project, it is one of the most important. So we want to give you some ideas, strategies, options to finance whatever projects you decide to take on next. And then we get to chapter seven. This chapter is the action part of our action plan. What we did is we took many of the goals identified throughout the community. We laid them out in four parts or four phases. Two of the phases are categorized as short-term goals, and the other two are categorized as long-term goals. We did this for two reasons. One, we recognize that large goals can seem overwhelming unless you break them down into smaller, more achievable goals. Secondly, we wanted to give you a list of things that could be done tomorrow, next week, next month, you know, quickly, so that the community can start to see changes, even if they are small, more quickly. Our thought process is that this will build the momentum in order to eventually tackle those larger projects that might still be years down the line. I want to quickly break down section 7.1.1 into a bit more detail because in some ways, I do think this is the most important section. Here, we have listed the things that you can do to start to create that sense of place in the downtown. And oftentimes, it's not just art things. There's a lot of things you have to do prior to. So first is policy adoption. We talk about the ways that the different governing agencies can adopt policies that can start to get the ball rolling with regard to public art. We then look at community partnerships and roles. The success of downtown revitalization is dependent upon the partnerships that are established and making sure that people understand what their roles are and take responsibility for them. We then discuss city beautification ideas that can be done on a smaller scale, and we talk about community events for the downtown. The rest of the implementation and action items build on this foundation, which you can see in the outline, with the final goal being the Performing Arts Center of the DOMA Plan from 2018, I believe. So this is our outline. Thank you for your patience as I went through all of this. I know this is a lot of information, but we want to make sure you have a good understanding of where we are in the process, so you can give us some feedback. With regard to the schedule, we're thinking that in January, we will do an administrative draft workshop. I think that's at the end of January or so. So we'll get the comments from you, make all of our applicable edits, and then in February is when we will hand you the final draft of the feasibility plan, which is that six-month mark. So with that being said, does anyone have any questions, comments, general feedback for us regarding the outline?
You have an outline, then nothing's written up.
Pardon?
I see the outline, but I don't see anything that's been written up.
Right, so what we wanted to show you now was the general outline with, not sure if you're familiar with Word, the first three layers of the outline. But chapters one through four have been drafted. We just didn't want to hand you half of a drafted report at this point. So we figured, let's go comprehensively through everything we want to talk about in this document and then get some feedback, just to make sure that we're on the right track and we have incorporated all of the major things you want us to look at.
Presenting the draft will be a multi-step process. Bring administrative draft forward, draft forward to the public. And then finally, once we've had a chance to get feedback from entities, the administrative draft will be going directly to entities. to entities, form the authority, general public input, and then, once we've assimilated that, changes, additional input, all of that has to be put back, put back into then, brought back to the ether. We didn't want to take, you don't want to take a half-written plan and just start putting very early drafts in rough shape out there because, well, it's, the writing process is busy.
Well, and I appreciate the fact that you're giving us an outline ahead of time. There's something that we think is going to be there. We're not surprised that it's not there. So I guess this is our chance to make sure that the things we want to see in that report, the issues we want addressed are actually there.
And you don't have to answer all that today. Or you can take the opportunity to go through this, give some thought as to what you consider the important things about the development of arts community can contribute to the items we're talking about, and send us those comments, call us, have further discussion, all of that's.
Right, right. And I believe in all of the interviews we'd had with people, we had that question: what do you particularly want to see in the document? So we're just running this by you to make sure that this is full and comprehensive and, and what you were thinking for the overall plan of the document.
One of my concern has been, what's the mountain area? How, how are they going to look at this in Chowchilla? You know, areas outside this immediate community.
We have reached out to, to those areas through Chowchilla. The mountain community is a little more difficult. I've been responsible for some of those contacts. I've reached out a few of the people through the board, but also some individuals. The arts community is pretty active up there, so we've located some folks, and that's the one area where I'm going to have some slight, a little further discussions with a couple of the people that are leaders in the artist community that, that have been up there. They don't have the same structure in terms of the organizational structure, but the school systems up there, and, and there is a little more of an informal and oriented more towards visitors, strong visitor community that uses the arts up in that community. So that's the last little piece of input where I think we need a little bit more input from. We've got those contacts.
And, and the great thing about a lot of the strategies for these revitalization efforts for public art in general is their applicability to all different types of communities. We obviously have to take into consideration the size of each of the agencies, but we are writing this document with that thought process, that what you can put down in downtown Madera could also be in Chowchilla or any of the other mountain communities.
Also, any formal policies that have to go through, that would be, formal ones that have to go through a government process would be going through the county process. They do represent the mountain community. That's the, that, that, nobody is incorporated up there. There's no local cities or anything like that. They are communities. They're, they're water districts, sewer districts, overschool, Raymond, and a lot of the other little ones. But their lead entity is the county, and we're going to be working through that more informal process.
Mr. Porthers, or Mr. Whelan, your thoughts?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I'd just like to mention also in response to Ray, you know, the, it's kind of more of a Madera-centric type of process, even though the county's put money in, it's been the City of Madera as well as Madera Unified School District. So it's, you know, so naturally, we're going to be focusing more on our local jurisdiction or the Madera, Central Madera region. Thank you.
Yes, well, the reason I'm asking the question is if you're going to have a vote on a community, a bond or something like that, and you're talking about the county, if it's going to be a city, or what? And you've got different voting blocks. There's a lot of votes up in the mountain area. And so, you know.
Yes, right. And I, I think that's going to be a long ways down the road, and I think what we're doing is, I think we've mentioned, looking at building blocks and, and kind of building on achievement after achievement. I think that a performing arts center, if that ever happens, is going to be way down the road. So I think they're going to be victories and, and projects that are going to be, again, more Madera-centric. Otherwise, we'd be pulling in every school district and every community and every jurisdiction as far as kicking in some dough.
Yeah, a lot of, many, many, many of the items that were seen already as, as action items are not very expensive ones, first few steps, first year. These are nothing that requires a bond issue. Many of them can be implemented through the day-to-day operations of government, different authorities and organizations here. The community, we have discovered, really looking for the small steps to know that there are small wins that are possible and happen within the structure of what we're doing. We had so many comments that said, you know, that idea of that big arts center, that was way out there, but boy, hasn't things even changed just in years. There's more performing arts centers even appearing, smaller ones. New casino plan, which will have capacity for, probably include, the way the other ones have, performing arts space, fancy, and do about up to 2,000 people in their performance. All of those things have an impact, and so our orientation isn't figure out how to pay for performing arts center. Our whole orientation is bringing the arts forward as a central theme for the community. How will that eventually play out in terms of utilities and activities and policies that moves forward through the community?
The major role of the Arts Council in all of this is to promote the arts in the whole of Madera County. And so we, our board has taken on the task of trying to expand our services into a, a bigger presence in the mountains, although they have a very strong arts community to start with, but to make partnerships with them as expanded audiences for their artwork and stuff. And then also to work with Chowchilla. And we've done concerts in the park with them, and, and we're trying to expand our education program for kids through the schools, so that all the schools in the county have that access. And so I think the Arts Council has a major opportunity to help in the short-term goals of spreading the, the, our, our efforts to get ourselves throughout the whole county. We also are connected to the Yosemite Visitors Bureau, and our director may, as, may well be a board member in the Yosemite Visitors Bureau, and we have a tourism alliance in our county so that we can expand our efforts that way as well. But I, I see the Arts Council playing a major role in not being so Madera-centric in terms of, of our activity. We're also trying to spread to Tesoro Viejo and Riverstone, which are going to be major community blocks of people. Whelan?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, well, this is certainly what I hope to see. I like item number six, financing, and, and then our short-term goals to get us started versus making sure we keep on the table our long-term goals. As far as I'm concerned, we're on the right track.
I think a good plan is one that's going to change quite a bit as time goes on. I think you'll find, especially in this environment of the world today, I think the pandemic example, taking up a lot of things. People might have been planning on how you approach them. You know, everybody I've talked to in the entertainment business, especially, talking about long-term changes to, really startling, and even the pros in the field, the big companies, are not.
Right.
We have to see. People's habits are being, we'll have to see all of that. Trying to incorporate some of that thinking into time.
Right. This is, this is an interesting time because it's showing how important it is to be flexible. I think we've all changed our lifestyle in some way, and that's due to the pandemic. But with that being said, we want this plan to be something that can be flexible. We don't want to say, on Tuesday, you do this, then the next month, you do this. We want to hand you ideas that we have and a general outline of how we can get there, but understanding that it, it's your project at the end of the day. It's, it's you implementing it, and other strange variables could come too, and we're going to have to stay flexible with it. But thank you for the feedback. I'm glad to hear that this is what, what you were thinking in terms of what this looks like.
Okay. Thank you. We're looking forward to seeing the words that go with it.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Okay. And the next item is the Treasurer's Report. The Treasurer is, is here by video. So item number one is the Presentation of the Arts Authority Treasurer's Report. Mr. Porthers?
Yes. As you can see, there's a balance sheet and an income statement. I don't have them in front of me, but I think that the income statement shows roughly 101,000 in revenues. We've kicked out checks so far, I believe, at about, well, actually, 10,000. And then we have also our balance sheet has a little over 101,000 in it. We have accounts payable of 20,000, which are two $10,000 payments to QK. Shows, shows our net worth at about 81,000. The, we have not yet invoiced the City of Madera for the 29,920, and so therefore, it does not show as receivable. But once that has been invoiced, then that will show as a receivable, and then obviously, as we receive the, well, it'll show as, it'll show as revenue, and then it will show as a receivable, and then, once we receive the money, then it'll be an increase in cash and it, and that receivable will go away. Underneath that, you will notice that there's a letter from Betty Yee, and she's the State Controller, and basically, it just gives instructions on our year-end financial statement and some of the things to consider. I'm going to be approaching Ralph, I can't remember his last name. He's a CPA with Monty Schultz, and he does the audits for the Madera EDC, and he does them fairly reasonably. And so he, it ought to come in as something south of what the EDC's paying, since we have a, really a fraction of the activity that the EDC has at this stand, at this point. So are there any questions?
No, I had a question about when we were going to invoice the City Council, but you answered that. You're getting ready to do that, so.
Right.
Oh, never mind. That's going to come up in the next item. Anything else on the Treasurer's Report? Would you like? Would you like approval of the Treasurer's Report?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report?
I still move second.
Been moved and seconded? Any public comment? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And item number two is a discussion and direction to authorize payment of warrant in the amount of $10,000 to Quad Knopf. This is our monthly payment. We're, we're paying our consultant at $10,000 a month, so this is the second installment. Any questions?
Second or third?
Third now.
Yeah, that's our third.
Third, yes. Okay. Comments from the audience? Questions? Okay, from the board? Is there a motion to approve or to give direction to the county, to our treasurer, to pay the third installment, $10,000?
I'll move $10,000, the third installment to be paid. Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number four, C is discussion and consideration of insurance, legal services, and related provisions of the Joint Powers Agreement.
Thank you, Board. Regina Garza, your counsel here, and apologies for not updating this board letter. I was out last week, and the agenda needed to be posted, so it's a stale board letter, but still has a lot of the background information. We have worked with several brokers to get some quotes on general liability insurance that has taken us, filling out applications, and, just to give you a list, and, and working with Mr. Querine, too, to get you actual quotes at your next meeting. However, we contacted CSAC, and their, their advice was that they use an authority called PRISM, P-R-I-S-M, and they said that based on the information that we provided, their plans are too large for this authority. However, they gave us some leads, and so the, I wanted to just name them because I had a chance to talk with Mr. Querine, just to make sure that they sounded familiar to him, which they did. Golden State Risk Management Authority has promised us a quote this week, meaning Wednesday, Special District Risk Management Authority, and Alliant Insurance, and one other that I don't have the name for. Hopefully, we'll have four legitimate quotes based on applications for you at your next meeting, so we can hear from you on how you want to go forward. But we weren't able to get them by today's meeting, but we have, or we are getting there.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So we can't put under the county, then reimburse the county?
That's what we talked to, that's what we tried to do through CSAC, and they, I guess, I need to make sure that they absolutely said no. I won't say they said no unless I absolutely know, but I'll make sure I have that answer too. But I, I don't think that they, that, that they would just add a rider because you're, you're different than them. Let's, for example, First Five is a different body, and they, they don't, they aren't attached to the counties, even though the Board of Supervisors appoints the First Five Commission. They are still separate and apart, and they have a separate policy. But through CSAC, and I guess because they have almost a million-dollar budget, they qualify for the amount for PRISM, but not based on this budget here. So there's a little bit of difference. So I think the answer is no, but I want to get that in writing for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the general liability insurance? At our last meeting, we discussed the, our... Oh, I guess I don't have that right. I was thinking at our last meeting, we discussed legal services, cost of legal services, and we haven't, we haven't really come to any conclusion about that yet.
Well, I think, I think you did. I think you said you were going to stay with the same rate from Lozano Smith, and then also the clerk, the clerk services, but neither were submitted to the treasurer for invoicing this month. Mine specifically, unless that's, we have a different understanding, but mine specifically, we, part of my other report was for ethics reasons, because I'd be bringing an agreement to this board at the next board meeting. I just didn't want to surprise you and put it on because we didn't talk about that, but because we'll be invoicing you separately, then from the county, it would be a separate agreement for ethics reasons. And so, but we're, it's going to mirror the counties and including the rate, which I think is the important part.
Okay. I, I think that's what my note said was going to happen.
Right, but I didn't, I didn't talk about the, the agreement because at that point, I didn't know what the, the board wanted to do. But once I heard that, we did draft it all up, but since I didn't mention it, we didn't stick it on here. So we are holding last invoice and this invoice until we bring it all back at the next meeting. And I'm sure the clerk will submit an invoice, too.
And, and the arrangements we're looking at is that out of our fund, we're going And, and the arrangements we're looking at is that out of our fund, we're gonna pay for the clerk and the legal.
Right. And then just an accounting through the last meeting was included, and, and it's in this backup too, just to show the ballpark. And now, um, at least from my desk, there has, there was almost little to nothing other than an associate asking for quotes, but for myself, the legal work is just, should be, no surprises, but, no surprises. But the invoices will be in your board packet, and we can...
Okay.
Re- remind me, did we, I, I know we talked about a starting date, retroactive or going forward, but I don't know what the end conclusion was as far as these billings. And were they the same for both legal services and clerk? Or were they different startup dates?
I think they were the same startup date, which would be from the meeting, the last meeting.
That's what I have in my notes, from the date of the last meeting forward.
Yeah, because we did ask...
We needed to, um, the board needs to approve that.
Right.
You're gonna bring the paper.
Right. So you gave us the direction that, to maintain, and so then to start invoicing, which I expect on your next Treasurers Report.
Okay, great. Uh, let's see, is there any other hanging things to do related to our insurance, legal services, and related provisions of the JPA? Okay, well, good. Then we'll move to member and staff reports. Are there any? I have a, just a brief one. Um, several people who were, um, school district, not school district, uh, Arts Council, city, people, uh, participated in an Irvine Foundation, uh, grant meeting, uh, this last month, and the Irvine Foundation does, is interested in doing work in communities, um, like ours. And, uh, and, and they are, uh, they're doing, they have a lot of interest in, um, finding ways to bring people up to better jobs so that they can contribute more to the economy and be, move up to middle class. So it's ways that we can improve our community, make it attractive for people, to bring jobs into the community, so that people can get better jobs and, and move up. And they're interested in ways that communities kind of come together to help, uh, make that happen. So that one of their goals is low-income worker has the opportunity to advance to the middle class. I think what the school district is doing, um, and others as well as Madera Unified, but there's a concerted effort to do career technical training, and, uh, and that brings kids into certification so that they can be available for those jobs, so that when the community brings in jobs, we've got workers for them, and that'll bring them to a, a higher standard of living. Um, so anyway, I think that we might, they're looking for solutions in, that are rooted in communities with the greatest promise for change, partners in communities, bringing groups experiencing barriers, and, um, I think the, um, and I think the Madera community has a lot to offer, and so maybe one of the things we're gonna be able to hook into through our partnership during the Arts Authority will be some help from the Irvine Foundation as we do. Okay, anybody else? Uh, I have one final item, and that is that, uh, next Monday, next meeting is a December meeting. Uh, if the board does not feel the need to have that meeting, we could cancel it and go to January for our next. That, okay for you guys? Word?
Okay, they're gonna pay it, remember? Don, comment?
I'm good with canceling it.
How about your payment, though? You need a, need a payment in December?
Well, it's real simple. If we don't meet, you don't get paid because there's no motion, no second, no approval. Okay.
But if your report is good in January, you could, you know, get twice as much money, so...
Yeah, it'd be a stimulus in January.
It sounds like you have plenty of work to do in the December-January range. Okay, so unless we hear otherwise, we can cancel our, our December meeting?
All right, go for it.
Okay, ladies? Okay, and then, so our next meeting will be January, uh, whatever the fourth Monday is in January.
It'll be fifth?
Twenty-fifth, January 25th. Okay. So if there's no other business before us, then, um, this meeting is adjourned. Everybody stay safe and healthy and have a good Thanksgiving, whether you're doing it remotely or in person with your family and...
Likewise.
And we'll see you January, if not...
Same to you. Karen, I think in January, do they bring a list of meeting dates? You got it? You're dialed in? Just some, just thinking about the agenda for decent, for January, where they might have to approve their meetings for the, which will look...
We do.
Yeah, just thinking about an agenda item for January. Setting forth the fourth Monday of every month.
I'll check the, uh...